Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call our city council meeting for Wednesday, October 23rd, 2019 to order. You know, at this time for a moment of silence, you know, I had an opportunity today to be at the Mississippi, Upper Mississippi River Conference, where local, state, national, and international people were coming together, concentrating on our Mississippi River. We had five mayors, agencies from all throughout the United States. We had reps from 10 states, that's what the Mississippi River Cities and Towns does, which I've been a part of, 95 mayors altogether. And, you know, it's really, it was really so great to see all of those different individuals from different municipalities and different states, coming together for a common cause, and not finding anything to argue about. You know, let's think about that for our, and we have a pretty good job of the positive thing here, but think about potentially statewide or nationally, that isn't what's happening. So let's find ways that we can find all of us coming together for a common cause that impacts everybody positively. So with that in mind, let's take a moment Thank you very much. Alderman Condon, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Brian, would you please call the roll?
Kimber, Condon, Rossen, here. Dickman, here. Compton, here. Gripp, here. Matson, here. And, uh...
Thank you, Brian. And again, I want to wish you a good evening. And as we begin this meeting of our city council, I would again like to welcome all of those in attendance, and also those who are viewing the meeting on your computer or on your mobile device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, and please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the region, as our city council meetings are recorded and available on the City of Davenport website for viewing. We are happy that you are participating in your city government, and ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport an even greater place for all of our citizens. For the children, adults, seniors, and families in our community, those in attendance, and those watching at home, I thank you for joining us. At this time, we ask that you turn off or silence your electronic handheld devices or your cellphones, as they can be disruptive and interfere with the audio system here in the chambers. If you address, wish to address the council on a specific item on a discussion agenda, you are encouraged to do so during that discussion item. You will have an opportunity to discuss, to address the city council under public with business portion of the meeting, which will occur toward the end. When addressing the council, I ask that you step to the podium, wait to be recognized by myself, and speak to the city council as a body and not to any single member. We will ask that you limit your remarks to no more than five minutes, and I ask that everyone observe, and I know you all will, the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, dignity, decorum, and good taste. So again, thank you all for being here. We really are appreciative of you attending. First of all, will an Alderman move approval of the city council meeting minutes for October 9th, 2019?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you. Those minutes are approved. Is there a city administrator report this evening?
No.
Thank you, Brandon. Will an Alderman move approval of the report of the committee of the whole for October 16th, 2019?
Seven.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. That report is approved. We have a couple of appointments and proclamations this evening. First, we have two appointments. One for the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. Michelle Bailey is a new appointment for the Third Ward for Parks and Rec, and Austin Byrd, a new appointment from Citizens Advisory Committee. Each of the Aldermen and myself get appointments on those, so all of those have. This was the Third Ward in mind for the Citizens Advisory Committee. All in fa, any with a motion to approve the two appointments?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. A thank you to those individuals who have jumped in to serve our communities on this commission, and these appointments for these committees. We have three proclamations this evening. Our first one is Audiology Awareness Month, October 2019. Alderman Gripp is going to lead and present that proclamation.
Thank you, Your Honor. It's my, my honor to read this proclamation, and it reads, "Whereas approximately 37.5 million Americans suffer from hearing loss affecting people of all ages. Hearing loss may occur suddenly, but most often develops over several years or decades. Whereas hearing loss is the third most common health problem in the United States, untreated hearing loss can affect your ability to understand speech and could impact your social and emotional well-being. Whereas audiologists are the primary healthcare professionals who evaluate, diagnose, treat, and manage hearing loss and balance disorders in adults and children. Whereas audiology consultant staff of highly-trained audiologists have been providing services in the Quad Cities area for 40 years. Their practice is dedicated to providing the very best and most comprehensive preventative diagnostic and rehabilitative hearing healthcare possible. Whereas audiology consultants' goal is to improve the lives of people with hearing loss through better hearing. Now therefore we, Mayor Frank Klipsch, and the Davenport City Council do hereby proclaim October 1st through October 31st, 2019, as Audiology Awareness Month in the City of Davenport. And in doing so, we ask that all citizens recognize the need to raise public awareness about the importance of the assessment and treatment of our hearing health, dated this 23rd day of October, 2019. I move the proclamation."
It has been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Alderman Gripp, would you make the presentation, please?
Yeah. So, accepting tonight from two practice owners from audiology consultants are Heather Sandy and Margaret, Margaret Christensen. If you can meet me up front, I will present you with the proclamation.
proclamation this evening is for the International LGS Awareness Day, November 1st, 2019, and Alderman Matson is going to make that proclamation and present it.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas International LGS Awareness Day is observed throughout the United States and around the world on November 1st, and whereas Lennox-Gastaut Syndrome is a rare and debilitating form of childhood, childhood onset epilepsy that many people have never heard of, so initiatives that increase public awareness are extremely important. And whereas Lennox-Gastaut Syndrome is typically diagnosed before the age of eight years old, and is characterized by frequent, uncontrolled seizures, multiple seizure types, a resistance to medication and/or therapies, and intellectual disability. And whereas individuals with LGS are at a high rate risk for sudden unexpected death and epilepsy, and the mortality rate is 5%, those with LGS are 24, 24 times more likely to die prematurely. And now therefore we, Frank Klipsch, Mayor, and the City Council of Davenport, Iowa, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2019, International LGS Awareness Day, and encourage all citizens of our community to join with millions of Americans in helping to support the efforts and awareness of International LGS Awareness Day. The City of Davenport Sky Bridge will display the color purple from Monday, October 28th through Sunday, November 3rd, in recognition of International LGS Awareness Day. I move the proclamation.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you very much, and I, I think...
Yes, the person had another engagement, Mayor, so I'll make sure Samantha gets the proclamation, and they'll get it to him.
Thank you very much. Actually, I think what we found out, the young lady who is this woman's child, had a special appointment related to this disease, and had to take it while she could get it. So, thank you, Alderman Matson, for that. Our third, we have one more proclamation, and I'm going to do this a little differently. I'm going to do this proclamation, go down and present that, then I'm going to stay down for the swearing-in of our, of our new firefighters. So, these are two really important ones that I, and all of them are, but really mean a lot to me. First, on the adoption, with four of my grandchildren adopted, four of my 10 grandchildren adopted, it is, it's very, very special to me. I've been there last four years for this event, and I'm looking forward to doing it again this year. So, let me read this, and then I think Eric Severn is going to come up, we're going to present it, and do we have another family with adopted baby, or do, is there somebody with, just not today? Oh, well, I won't ask that question. Never mind. "Whereas the City of Davenport, Iowa recognizes the importance of giving children permanent, safe, and loving families through adoption, and whereas more than 110,000 children in the United States foster care system are waiting to be adopted, and whereas more than 100 children in Iowa are waiting to, for permanent families, and whereas to help these children find permanent nurturing families, the local courts of Scott County will open their doors for the National Adoption Day Saturday, November 2nd, to finalize the adoptions of local children and join other organizations to celebrate all adoptions. And whereas this effort, along with small, similar celebrations in all 50 states, the District of Columbia, Guam, and Puerto Rico will offer children the chance to live with stable and loving families and encourage other dedicated individuals to make a powerful difference in the lives of a child through adoption, now therefore we, Mayor Frank Klipsch, and the Davenport City Council do hereby proclaim November 2nd, 2019, as National Adoption Day in the City of Davenport, and in so doing urge all citizens to join in a national effort to raise awareness about the importance of adoption, dated this 23rd day of October, 2019."
Somebody move the proclamation?
Move the proclamation. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Same sign.
(laughing)
I now have the honor of asking, we're going to be swear-ins of new firefighters, and this is one of the great things I get to do. You're going to do the intro, and I'm going to be swearing-in.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. As he said, this is a very proud moment, and any chief's time, when they get to introduce the new members of their department to you. These individuals we're going to share with you today, demonstrate the values and the commitment of Davenport Fire Department. They started their journey in mid-June, went through an eight-week training period, all in-house. After that, they were assigned to their respective shifts, and they've actually been on shift work now for about two months. The first person I'd like to call up is Nathan King. Firefighter Nathan King was born and raised in Wyoming, Illinois. He graduated from Stark County High School in 2012. After high school, he attended Western Illinois University, graduated with a bachelor's degree in fire science. After college, Nathan joined the Illinois Air National Guard, where he's still an active member today. Firefighter King has achieved his firefighter one and firefighter two certificates, and he is planning to go to school for paramedic in the near future. In his free time, he enjoys spending time with his family, friends, and outdoors. Nathan's father, Jason, will be in his passion. (inaudible) I will solemnly swear, and solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability, discharge all the duties of a firefighter, of the City of Davenport, of the City of Davenport, County of Scott, State of Iowa, as now or thereafter required Next, I'd like to call up Danny Anderson.
Next, I'd like to call up Ben Anderson.
Next, I'd like to call up Danny Anderson.
Next, I'd like to call up Ben 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 Anderson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a reminder that council will not be in session next week because we have the fifth week, and so we will not be here next week. We will be back in November, on November 6th. So, just, so there'll be a few things that'll be coming up next week. First of all, remember to set your, your, that we fall back on to daylight savings time on Sunday, November 3rd. So set your clock back one hour on Saturday night. Also a reminder that free yard waste pick, pickup begins the week of October 28th, so happy raking. And it's going to be very, very cold next week, so you might want to get busy on that this weekend. And, you know, speaking of that, there are people in our community that have issues with energy and being able to pay for that cold weather, the, the, paying for energy during the cold weather. So, wanted to remind folks again about the assistance from a community action of Eastern Iowa. Iowa. There is, it is a income-based guidelines, but there, folks can get a sick, energy assistance from them. Now, through November 1st, people under 60 or people with someone, with a household, with a person with disabilities can begin to apply. But as of November 1st, everyone can apply, of any age can apply for this assistance. And that starts November 1st. So, you can call them at (563) 324-3236, or just Google Community Action of Eastern Iowa online, and they have a very helpful website. So, please, if you know someone who needs that help, please share that with them. Also, wanted to tell you about a couple of things going on in the community. There's two chances to check out, too, of Davenport's most historic cemeteries on Saturday, November 2nd. The Fairmont Cemetery Harvest Festival's 12 noon to 3 p.m. It'll feature tours of its historic crematorium and mausoleum. There'll be information about the prairie restoration that's going on there, wagon rides for the kids. And then the city cemetery, the same day, will offer walking tours from 1:30 to 3 p.m. These are very historic places, and at both locations, you can learn about the people buried there who helped create the city that we live in today. Finally, just a reminder, again, not being here next week, but city and school board elections will be Tuesday, November 5th, so please get out and vote. This is the first time that the city elections and the school board elections have been held at the same time. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Your Honor. I wanna, see, we had a great ward meeting last night, and I wanna thank the library staff, as always, they do, they do an incredible job. It was great seeing a lot of young people at the library, having fun. And I wanna thank Clay Merritt, he did his usual great job making a presentation on behalf of Public Works.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public that would like to, yes, sir, please? Identify yourself and your ward, please, or your address.
I'm Tom Jefferson, resident of the 6th Ward, and representing the Jersey Farms Neighborhood Association. And again, the area we're talking about here actually does not include the Call Home and residential, but essentially, this area down through here is the area we're talking to, that's west side of Elmore and the south side of Elmore. And it's not just affecting only Jersey Farms residential area. Jersey Farms being the residential area here, this is Forest Road Estates down here, and this is also R2 area down here, which is the Advanced Homes recently platted area for residential as well. So, we're actually talking about three affected neighborhoods, not just relating to Jersey Farms as well. On the zoning map, we can see up here, again, we're talking about this area right across through here. The area concerned, contested down on the south end, it does border to residential R2 on the very west side, C3 being 55 feet on the south end, C3 on the west. So, it is consistent here, we have 55, 55, and residential area, the very west of this south end area that was just being discussed at this point. Up here being Jersey Farms again, and Forest Road Estates being immediately south of Jersey Farms, adjacent to that particular area. Now, Orange 1901, Section 8 also had a provision in that ordinance that involves for an administrative exception up to a 10% on any of the dimensional allowances. So, actually, 55 feet could become 60 feet if that was so approved to do that without going through the hardship variance. So, there is some additional flexibility, that was part of the ordinance 1901, Section 8, that made that change. So, the request is, again, to amend the zoning table to make that area from 120 feet to 55 feet west and south of Elmore Avenue. And that was also unanimously passed by planning and zoning in their October 1 meeting. So, summary, the request before us here does provide some transitional zoning from residential neighborhoods to commercial for actually three neighborhoods, not just Jersey Farms. The south end of this area under consideration is adjacent to R2, not adjacent to Jersey Farms, but is still adjacent to R2, with C3 on the south and west of that development. And where that brings us, actually, the previous zoning for that area prior to the zoning, what in fact about the first this year, was primarily a PDD planned developmental district. So, to the north of that, in the PDD only had conditions if they were so placed, there was a 50-foot limitation on the north end, that was part of the Casino Resolution F14-11 that limited it to 50 foot on the north side. The very east side of Jersey Farms was part of PDD, but within the PDD, the change here, again, is that allowed consideration, public meetings, notification of adjacent property owners. It had to go through planning and zoning, public meetings, and come to this council. You know, those things no longer exist in the current CE district. There's no longer any notification to property owners, there's no going through planning and zoning, there's no coming back through this council. It's subject to review by the Design Review Board only, and there's no other public input, council input, or planning and zoning input. So, the protection that we're asking for today is quite honestly less than what we had before, but it's better than we got today, which kinda looks like a compromise. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Let's see, we have any other, anybody else wanna speak, come in the public? Yes, sir?
Joe Slavens for Woodview Way, Forest Road Estates, Homeowners Association Officer. I just wanna remind the council that topography being different than the property that was referenced with respect to the height of this property relative to the residential housing that is there. The second is, the comment that I would briefly make would be that the nature of this CE, as I understand it, zoning does not provide for nearly the level of public notice for changes that are being made, so we're seeking this protection not only overall, but also for the level of notice that we would otherwise receive, as I understand. The level of notice in CE for public hearings for changes is lesser than the standards that are in other zoning, and that's what I've been, if that's not correct, they can, if someone can correct me. And then finally, when it comes to the compromise, I guess what I would suggest is, it's very difficult to compromise without knowing what the nature and type of the project is. And what I would recommend is if, if somebody wants to say, "We need to do something different," whenever that development comes along, I think as good developers have done in the past, is to bring that to the residents and to say, "Here's what we're gonna do, here's why it doesn't affect you," and get it on board. I think about the development for Mill Chevrolet, and that's exactly what took place. Sometimes when people don't bring a specific project, it's very difficult to see in the abstract. So, again, that's why we would request the change in the zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Yes, sir?
Your Honor, Council, my name is Jeff Hyland. I live at 6307 Fairhaven Road. My home actually lives, is on top of the hill west of Elmore. So, when you approve 120-foot, 100-foot height building, that building's gonna stick 150 feet in the air because of the topography there. I understand we need commercial development in the city, and I understand that they seem to think they need an 80-foot building. But we need to provide a good buffer between our residential areas and our commercial areas. We don't have that, and what is being proposed today eliminates that. For us to have to go to bring, come to the council and protest if somebody wants to build a 100-foot building and go through all the approval stuff, I mean, we've, we've been here, we've done that, and we had a 50-foot limitation before, it was eliminated, and 120-foot limitation was imposed. So, I guess what I'm asking is for the council to please put a limit on the height of the buildings in the area that borders our neighborhood, so that we have a decent buffer between the commercial properties and our residential areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Seeing no one, let's go to our, any aldermen, and Alderman Mattson.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, just a few points here, most have been said, I'll just reiterate a little bit. So, point one, P and Z passed this unanimously, so that, that should mean something to us. We have done, had a precedent where we chained zoning before, we've done it on other times. I think this is certainly a time we can do that. Lot of residential concerns, part, point three, point four, geography, as Mr. Slavens mentioned, we're not really talking about 120, we're talking about a lot higher than that, and that's, I don't think is good, right next to the residential. And, and the big one in my case, I was on council when the casino went out, and we did have a understanding with the neighborhood out there that there would be a buffer, there would be height limits, there would be all that. I know we changed the zoning, but we haven't, we had an agreement with that neighborhood, and we should honor that. So, because of the history and the other points that are made, I think we should pass this and make it 55. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Mattson. Alderman Grip.
Thank you, Your Honor. I spoke on this last week, and the comments I made then still stand for myself, but Alderman Kuhl, whose ward this land is in, wanted me to read something on his behalf. So, this is from Alderman Kuhl. "I apologize for not being able to present at tonight's council meeting. I am visiting my daughter in New Zealand, and will be out of cellphone range at the time of the meeting this evening. I am confident that my colleagues on the council will give a fair and considered reading of ORD 19-03, and I appreciate the opportunity to add my voice to that conversation as the alderman whose district is directly impacted by this agenda item. Over the last two years, interest in commercial and residential development in the 6th Ward has been high. During this time, I have worked with residents to bring their concerns to the table as we made decisions on zoning which occasionally conflicted with the best interests of invested residents. I have found that the balance between the interests of developers and residents is of ultimate importance in assuring that the long-term interests of our vibrant city are maintained. ORD 19-03 provides the council an opportunity to align the interests of residents and developers. The slip of land south of Veterans Memorial Parkway and west of Elmore Avenue is a transitional zone between a vibrant commercial district and existing residential and future districts as well. The balancing act before us is assuring the dignity of present and future vested residential constituents and the positive commercial interests in Elmore Corners. I believe that ORD 19-03 is the considered opportunity to honor both parties, providing the opportunity for commercial development while respecting the fact that a one-size-fits-all height allowance of 120 feet is inconsistent with neighboring private homes is the right thing to do. Thank you for the opportunity to add my thoughts from Down Under. Rich Kuhl, 6th Ward Alderman." Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Grip and Alderman Kuhl, by far, far away. Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor. Like, I understand where the neighbors are coming from. They, they got their investment, and they've been there a long time, but we got a family that's owned this property for several decades. You know, this is a unique opportunity for them with this zoning, zoning where it is now, that if it changes, it could cost them several million dollars, which I think is very unfair. They've asked that we sit down and give them the opportunity to meet with the neighbors and hopefully with our city attorney, Tom Warner, and see if we can come up with a compromise. You know, they're not talking 120 feet, they're talking around 80 feet, and with proper setbacks, you know, I think those issues the neighbors have can be addressed. So, a great family, was on the property for decades. You know, I can't get behind doing a change that could cost them several million dollars. It's unfair to them, and at the same time, they've reached out and asked for the opportunity to sit down and see if we can come up with a compromise. They already said they're not talking 120 feet. So, on behalf of good government, you know, it's a give and take and a compromise, and I would hope the neighbors, on behalf of another neighbor, are willing to sit down and discuss this.
Thanks. Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Alderman Rosson.
Thanks, Your Honor. I was just wondering if someone from staff, as I'm listening to the comments and listening to Alderman Ambrose. to Alderman Ambrose, I, I went out myself and looked at the site, but I'm wondering, can we get just like a, a one-page, just like a slice right through the topography where it shows the neighborhood over here, kind of that valley dip and how the land comes up and is higher next to Elmore, but then have a, a shadow representation of a 55-foot building to scale and an 80-foot building to scale, along with what's across the street? Because across the street's the Walmart, Dick's Sporting Goods Development. Can we just get like a one-page rendering of that, like to scale, to kind of see what that looks like?
Hey, Matt, Matt Flynn, Community Planning? Yeah, I think that would be fun. We've got the topo information, we can, we can do what we consider cross-sections.
What do you think turnaround time for that would be? So I'd like, I'd like to take it with me and go back out and look at the site.
By?
End of the week, or?
By, by this week?
End of the week? Okay, thanks, Matt.
Thank you, Alderman Rossen. Again, as, first of all, we need to go forward. Will and Alderman, anybody else? I don't see anybody. Will and Alderman move first consideration of the ordinance? It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion by any of the aldermen? And again, I would just want to reiterate, this is the first consideration of three with meetings in between. So with that in mind, we have a motion and a second. Brian, would you call the roll, please?
Mattson?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Tomkins?
Yes.
Grip?
Yes.
And McGinnis?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. The ordinance moves to a second consideration of three. Is there a motion for approval of all the items on the consent agenda? It's been moved and seconded. Brian, would you please call the roll for that, please?
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Tomkins?
Yes.
Grip?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
And Mattson?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. We do have another ordinance revolution, resolution, or motion this evening. One is, is there a motion, first of all, for suspension of the rules to add and vote on the item that is listed below? It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Tomkins?
Yes.
Grip?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
And Dunn?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Our resolution that we're talking about tonight, and we have suspended the rules now, is setting a, resolution setting a public hearing related to a lease agreement with a railroad operator for the lease of the city's main track and real property, 25 feet on each side thereof of the Davenport Transload facility and terminal. Is there anybody from the public who want to talk about this? Before that, Brandon, could you do just a quick summary of, of this and what precipitated this discussion?
Sure, Your Honor. This is a motion, our resolution here, setting a public hearing for November 5th, and that's related to the rail operator for the city's short line that we own, that goes from the CP Eldridge Spur over to our transload facility. As the council's aware, we're looking at switching out the operator for that, and part of that is a lease agreement. And any lease agreement over three years requires city council first hold a public hearing before you approve that lease. As we move quickly through this process, we anticipate having something on your agenda that first cycle in November, requiring us to, to have a date set tonight so that we can have that public hearing on November 5th.
So just a clarification, we're just gonna make sure we set a placeholder to have that discussion, and, and all the details will be discussed prior to any, making any final decisions.
Correct. Yeah, the RFPs have come in today. We received three RFPs for that, which is good news, and we will review those and then share the results of that with the city council.
And with that, is there anybody else, after you have that other additional information from the public that want to talk about that? Seeing none, I'm gonna turn to any of the council, and Alderman McGinnis.
Yes, Your Honor, just a point, do you mean Wednesday, November 6th? Is that when the public hearing is?
You are correct.
Thank you. Alderman McGinnis. Seeing no other, we had, is there, Alderman will move the, we've already done that discussion?
Need a motion and second.
Is there a motion to move the, move it forward? Let's do it for sure. Moved and seconded, and now, Brian, would you please call the roll?
Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Tomkins?
Yes.
Grip?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
And Ambrose. Nine yeses, Your Honor.
Great. The resolution for setting the public hearing has been adopted. Is there any other public with business this evening? Adam?
Adam McWilliams, 3rd Ward. I have a Global Messenger Conference this next month on November 8th in Des Moines, and I have filled out an application to be part of Speedway Fire Rescue, and I'm planning on being officially sworn in on November 10th. So I just wanted to give you guys, let you guys know what I've been up to lately.
Great. Well, thank you, Adam. Thanks for all the work that you do.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Yes, Dwayne.
Hi, Dwayne Womack with Street Friends of Quasities. Last week, Will came up and talked about our dinner we're having with a collaborative group. I want to thank the mayor and the city council for all the contributions to that. It's gonna be great, November 17th. Date changed us just a little bit. With y'all's help and a lot of other people, there's gonna be plenty of food, plenty of gifts to give away to everyone that comes. So I appreciate everybody's help for that. And then to Alderman Dickman and Rossen, thank you so much for the tokens for the Street Friends today. Thank you very much.
Bus tokens?
Bus tokens, sorry.
Clarification?
Yep, sorry, the bus tokens. And then my granddaughter wants to come and see your office again when you're there.
Sure.
So she was very happy to, excited to see that. Thank you again so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for the work you do. Anyone else from the public? Seeing no one else, are there any of the reports of city officials? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming. Meeting adjourned.